On the commission October thirteenth meeting.
You'll say.
First, first item of business is the approval of the September invoices. If everyone's had the time to look, we'll uh.
Swear by you, make sure they sign.
We need a motion to approve the invoices. For the record, Mr. Uh, Mr. Solsky's not present. Well, for the record, Mr. Solsky just showed up.
There you go.
So, alright, Jeff, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve the September invoice.
Motion by Mr. Caldwell.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Shirley. All those in favor say aye. Those poll. Motion approved, uh, approval of the September eighth twenty sixteen minutes. Everyone's had time to look at those. Need a motion to approve?
We approve the September eighth minutes.
Second by Mr. Snell. Need a second?
I second.
Uh, second by Mr. Wiseman. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. Approval of the October agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Caldwell.
I second.
Second by Mrs. Mizell. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. As for postponement withdrawal, there is one, one postponement on the agenda. Do we need to announce that one, Joe, or?
No.
Okay. Other than that, everything's still good? Okay, the other three's still good. Consent agenda? Anything else?
Um, item PSP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-three, Haywood Unit One is eligible for consent, but I think there's residents here who speak.
Okay, so we need to hear that one?
I think so.
Alright. So, moving right along. Charlie, you wanna swear by your authority story?
Yes, sir. Everyone signed in to speak tonight, if you can stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the statements you're about to make to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
Yes.
Thank you.
That'd be the first thing.
First item, first application is DMA twenty sixteen dash forty-eight Bevins Rural Residential Subdivision Platte.
Alright, um, this, uh, this plat's kind of returning to us. It's a little bit unusual. Typically, uh, we, we hear the preliminary before the full planning commission, uh, and then the final, uh, as long as there's no major changes, uh, is, is reviewed and, and done by staff. In this case, however, if you, if you recall, um, they brought the, the rezoning, uh, application and the preliminary subdivision plat, uh, at the same time. And at that meeting, there was, uh, you know, the zone change was recommended approval and has since been approved by, uh, fiscal court. Um, but there was an understanding that the subdivision plat would come back before the planning commission, uh, before the final, um, because there were some disagreements, uh, particularly as it related to, um, New Coleman Lane. Um, but just to, just as a refresher, um, you know, there were, there were, there was another change made to the, to the plat. Um, the original proposal had, uh, eight lots being created out of a parent tract of fifty-three and a half acres. This plat that's, uh, before you today, uh, only creates seven, uh, tracts out of the same parent tract. Um, so there was that adjustment and there were, there was a, another adjustment that I'll get to in a second. Um, but, uh, it's at the northeast corner of New Coleman Lane in Ironworks. Um, it is now zoned A five. The surrounding zones are A one, which is our agricultural zone, and B two, which is our highway commercial zone. Uh, and the applicant is requesting, uh, one variance. Um, so, just as a summary again, this is, this is the parcel we're talking about here. This is parcel zone A five. Uh, this is the, this is the plat, uh, as they're seeking approval, uh, today. Um, one of the major changes is that there were two lots here. This has been condensed into, into one lot. And these two lots down here formerly were, I guess, facing, um, I guess, running more east-west and other, as you can see, they're facing more north-south. Uh, the purpose of which is they've eliminated, uh, the need for new entrances here along, uh, New Coleman Lane. Um, so this lot, or this entrance here is existing. There's a, an entrance up here that's existing that accesses tract one. Um, the proposed entrances for tracts, um, three and four are now shown off of Ironworks. Um, so those are, those are the major changes, um, to the plat since, since you heard it last. Um, the, the only, um, there we go. To my knowledge, you know, the, the applicant is, um, still, uh, in, in agreement with staff as far as, you know, the fencing requirements, the, the landscaping, uh, requirements around, uh, the A five lots where it adjoins, uh, A one lots. And, and the only real, uh, item of, of contention, I guess, is, is the, the widening of, of New Coleman Lane. So I've kind of outlined, uh, the, the current policy. Um, Article One, Section one sixty-five of the subregs is the sufficiency of infrastructure. Um, I believe it's quoted in, in the staff report as well. Uh, yes, I, I put all of that language in there and it's here up on the screen for, for, for those who wanna, who wanna read it now. But, um, basically what it says is that, you know, the planning commission may deny, uh, applications, uh, if there's insufficient ins- infrastructure to serve, um, to serve a cer- you know, a particular project that comes before you. Um, particularly if, if the applicant doesn't plan to make the improvements or if, you know, the, uh, it's not part of the capital improvement program of the providing agency, in, in this case, the county. Um, so with, with this guidance from the subregs, um, the planning commission in the past has, has had a policy, has had the policy that, you know, substandard roads don't exist, particularly substandard county roads, don't exist along major subdivisions. You know, they would either require the applicant to improve the, their half of the road up to county road standards, or they would deny applications. Um, so, just with that in mind, uh, major subdivisions, you know, by our subregs and, and our zoning ordinance, are any subdivisions that, you know, result in four or more lots, including the parent tract. So, this one is, is creating seven, uh, lots, so we would consider this a major subdivision. Um, so, I guess sort of before you, there's, there's really, uh, two options, uh, that you have. The first is to, uh, you know, use the current policy, require the applicant to either improve the, the substandard road, uh, in this case, New Coleman Lane, their half of it, um, prior to the, the recording of a final subdivision plat. Or if the applicant, you know, doesn't think that that's, you know, feasible, or if the cost benefit isn't there, the applicant obviously is free to, to not do the subdivision that they're proposing. Um, I, I did include a note that, you know, as far as the planning and zoning, our requirements, it, it, it almost doesn't matter to us how the, how the road widening occurs. If the applicant can come to some sort of agreement with fiscal court, you know, sort of public-private partnership, uh, as far as getting the road improvements, uh, completed, that's, that's acceptable to us. It's just a matter of, you know, continuing the policy of, you know, there's, there's going to be an increase in traffic, uh, due to the subdivision. That's going to impact, uh, New Coleman Lane, which is, uh, adjacent to the, the property that's proposed to be subdivided, so the improvements need to be done. Uh, the other option, uh, that, that you have, uh, would be to allow the variance to the sufficiency of infrastructure. Um, you know, stating clear reasons, uh, as part of your motion as to why, uh, the variance should be granted. And if necessary, uh, addressing whether staff needs to, you know, look into adjusting, uh, this, this portion of the subregs. Uh, and if you do grant the variance, obviously, uh, be sure to strike condition seven, uh, from the conditions of approval that staff recommends, uh, in, in the staff report. So, um, with those things in mind, uh, I'm recommending denial of the variance. Um, as I mentioned before, our current policy, uh, you know, requires these improvements. It's something that we've, uh, required for, for many years now. Um, I did want to also point out that even though, you know, they've eliminated new entrances along Coleman Lane, uh, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that no track, none of the, the traffic created by the five other lots that will be on Ironworks won't travel down Coleman Lane to get to, uh, US twenty-five, or people may not come, you know, down New Coleman Lane from twenty-five to get to their lots that are accessed off Ironworks. You know, the subdivision will have an impact on the neighboring roads. Um, you know, as I mentioned in the staff report, the ITE manual says that, uh, this will generate, uh, anywhere between forty-one to ninety-three, uh, trips per day, um, or per weekday. Um, I think it'll be slightly less on, on weekends, but, you know, if you think about, even if, you know, twenty percent of those go, go down, uh, New Coleman Lane, that's still a, you know, a substantial increase, I'm sure, in, in the amount of traffic that New Coleman Lane sees today. So, I'm recommending denial of the variance. I think it's, uh, I think it's important that we stick to the policy of requiring road improvements, uh, along major subdivisions. I'm recommending approval still of, of the, of the subdivision plat overall, um, with , uh, conditions that are, uh, very standard for, um, a subdivision of this type. There's no unusual conditions in there, um, you know, in, installing the landscaping or having it bonded prior to final subdivision plat approval, uh, installing the fence before final subdivision plat approval. Um, and, yeah. And that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for staff? Matt?
Not at this time, but I will.
In the last meeting, didn't we kind of propose that it be, just have the two driveways on the end? That it would be alright? Did, was that brought up at all?
Um, I mean, I, I know they mentioned, uh, reconfiguring it to, to eliminate the new driveways, but I don't think there was any agreement that, um, a rearrangement like that would, would automatically, um, grant a variance.
And the seven dwellings, you'd have, if two cars at each dwelling, you'd have fourteen cars, right? If you had two cars on each one. So would that make that much difference? I mean, how many did you say?
Uh, a single-family dwelling unit generates around nine and a half trips.
I mean, how many did you say was gonna be on Coleman Lane?
On Coleman Lane? I mean, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say. Uh, I mean, without somebody, uh, like a certified traffic engine, you're doing a study, it's hard to say.
What did you say a minute ago?
Uh, the subdivision of that type would, would generate forty, uh, forty-three to ninety-one, uh, trips.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I mean, like I said, it's hard to say how, where, where those cars will go.
One aspect of this is that this is not the only access to the subdivision, you know, if it was, you had to go down this lane, but you don't. You can go down Ironworks, matter of fact, more conveniently, go on down Ironworks, catch twenty-five and go on in. I went out there today and drove around a little bit, so, um, team like this is not a, you can easily rationalize a, an exception because of that. So little traffic. The entrances are already there and there are lots of other options. People don't like the narrowness of Coleman Lane.
Any more comments, questions? Thank you, Matt. Ms. Avicent?
Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, my name's Bruce Langford. I'm here for Mr. Bevins, who was not able to be here this evening. Couple of points of clarification. Number one, the policy we're talking about, um, if I'm not mistaken, Joe said at the, uh, agenda committee meeting, that was an unwritten policy. Is that right, Joe?
No, it's, it's written.
The regulation is written, but the policy is not written.
Um, no, it's not written anywhere I'm aware of as far as.
But it was adopted as part of the regulation, so it, it, it's in, if you will, uh, it was codified, albeit it says policy, but it's codified in the subregs, so it has been adopted.
But it's not in writing.
Yeah, we just read it as part.
Now, that's the regulation.
Well, but, regulations are adopted. I mean, our regulations are adopted, so.
I don't think that's where he's getting at. I think, well.
Well, I think it is. He's saying the policy was never adopted, 'cause it's not in writing. Well, yes, it is. It was never adopted as a mere policy. It was gone ahead and put into the regulations. So if you will, it skipped the, the more nebulous step and went straight into the regulations. So, unlike some policies we've done in the past where we, it was in writing only because it was in the minutes, 'cause we did it, uh, this is a policy that's actually written into the regulations. So, it's considerably stronger than perhaps some policies, unwritten policies we had in the past.
But it, does it say, Charlie, that the road shall be widened if you develop on the road so many tracks?
Joe, why don't you go back to that? Yeah, the second, well, actually, the whole thing applies to it. It is, it's relatively explicit.
Okay, so that's, that's the policy. The regulation is the policy. You use the word policy, you mean the regulation.
Yeah, because ordinarily, and, and I'm assuming really what Bruce means is usually you have a policy and then pursuant to the policy, you adopt a regulation. But we kind of skipped the first step and went straight to the second step.
Or you have a regulation and you adopt a policy. As a part of that, but normally it's not.
Well, I'm sure we've done it that way. My, my thought generally is you have a policy determination and then you adopt a regulation to enforce it. And that's, in effect, what we did in one step here.
And the only other thing I wanted to note before I tell you where we'd, we'd like for this application to go tonight, I'd like to, it looks to me like, Matthew, that your traffic count, your forty-two to one hundred, whatever, presumes it's all gonna go down Coleman Lane. Is that right?
No.
It doesn't?
That's, uh, for seven single-family dwellings, that's the, the traffic generated to one standard deviation.
It doesn't presume it's going down either road?
No.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the planning commission, is continue this hearing until next meeting, so that we can take a look at what our options are. It's a little bit uncertain at this moment, what we can or can't do under the regulations. It's a little uncertain about what requirements can be imposed on a major subdivision or even a minor subdivision. So I want to take a chance to look at that, um, unless you want to pursue it this evening. It's, you know, it's not my choice, it's your choice.
I do have a couple of questions for Matt. Um, I think it also is the same thing with the forty-three to ninety-one, uh, or forty-one to ninety-three trips per weekday, Matt. I went out there too and, and I did not see Commissioner Wiseman, so we must've missed each other. You know, you've got the two existing driveways, one, both on Coleman, the four new proposed off of Ironworks. You've got the mobile home out there, which I'm not even sure if it's being occupied or not. But the traffic, again, I think to Mr. Wiseman's point, you know, if I'm gonna live on Ironworks, I'm probably just gonna drive out Ironworks to twenty-five. It's not gonna create, I don't think, any more traffic on Coleman. It's almost like saying, I'm gonna go ahead and put a subdivision off of, uh, Ironworks and you know what, cane run might be used. Yeah, to say something like that, it just doesn't seem fair to the applicant. And if, and what I think Mr. Bevins said at the last meeting, or maybe Bruce said it representing Mr. Bevins, is he had four initial entrances on Coleman. He's actually made the changes to P's planning and zoning, this commission. And with that being said, you know, I really think there may need deviation from policy and procedures or, or the regulations. 'Cause I, I really don't see it creating that much more traffic, especially off Coleman. You know, the proposed driveways or entrances, as it says on, on Ironworks, is just that, it's four. So you may have four new homes back on Ironworks. You know, again, which way they go, you know, none of us in this room know. Just my two cents.
Well, um, having heard you speak, I'm also, um, amenable to go ahead and call in for the vote, if you want to vote on it tonight. If we have to adjust it, we can do it anyhow maybe, but if you want to vote on this plan, I'm, this is what we want. This is what we prefer. This is what we think is fair. This is the way we have planned it. This is the way we presented it and we think it does what it ought to be doing for this plan, to, the way it is, without having to widen Coleman Lane. So, vote on it.
Can I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Langford, before I vote?
Can I let him ask some questions, Mr. Chairman?
Actually, and I don't, this, this, this might be for Matt, and I don't know if you know the answer, Matt. I noticed if you, could you please back up to the, uh, section where we were talking about the different, uh, options that, that Mr. Bevins could possibly have in satisfying the commission? Um, this can be accomplished privately by the owner or through some public-private partnership with the county. How have we ever been through that? How complicated would that be to arrive at? My thinking, uh, I thought about this a lot, and I'm on Coleman Lane every day now. Didn't used to be. I like Coleman Lane's, I, I love it and people need to slow down anyways.
Could you, could you go the other way? Could you start going the other way, man? Excuse me if you're.
Okay, I'm going the other direction now, Mr. Langford. But, but, this is kind of the way I'm thinking about these situations. And I know it's a regulation and if, uh, if we have to stick to the regulation, understand that, we sometimes don't, especially me. But anyways, um, Mr. Bevins is taking this piece of property. He is creating seven new home sites. More than likely, from my experience, they're gonna be rather large homes. If you're gonna spend that kind of money, 'cause I know what the five-acre tracts are selling for, so, so I'm looking at it kind of like this. And I know he's doing it for profit. I don't have a problem with that. But he, in a roundabout way, is gonna be creating, and we did a little math earlier, probably somewhere between eleven and fourteen thousand dollars a year in county property taxes when these homes are built. Just kind of, and that's forever. Once, as a matter of fact, they're probably off, as we all well know, eventually they'll go up through the years. So, the way I'm kind of looking at it is, it's, the county is gonna be, um, and I don't know what the formula it takes, like the trips in and out of a house, how much it takes on the average per household that the county has to actually pay out for services. So you'd have to do a little bit more math than what I've been capable of doing, honestly, but I really don't think that it's fair for the developer to, to take the full brunt of the cost of that improvement. I think it would be a much better idea with the, uh, partnership kind of deal. That's the way I'm looking at it right now. Because the county is actually going, gonna, uh.
Benefit.
Benefit, yeah, yeah. With the profit, with, and we all know they're gonna build there. You know, he could've left it like it, this is kind of getting off, but he could, if he left it as one tract, the ag tract, I'm sure the county taxes on it's very minimal. So, and I'm sure he's not doing it for that reason, but I just got to thinking about it and it, you know, and it is gonna create a sizable revenue every year for the county. So I think that the county should take part of the responsibility, and it, if it's gonna be improved, to do those, to help do those improvements. And, and when I saw that, I thought, well, that's perfect, because I, I've never seen that option before, when we're talking about these kind of things. And, so if that's an option that we're, that we can go with, personally, I think that's the best option. I just don't know how complicated that would be to get the money lined out, who's gonna pay this and who's gonna pay that, if it's a fifty-fifty. I think it should be a fifty-fifty deal personally, but, and it shouldn't be that hard to then get it worked out.
I was just gonna add, I mean, obviously, we can't speak for the county.
I know, I know, I know.
I mean, we can't speak for the county, that's something that would have to be worked out between the applicant and fiscal court, if that, if that could work, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that idea too, if the county would pick it up. But if the county doesn't, I feel like it still should be part of the developer to take care of it. It's a policy we've been following for years. Other subdivisions have had to do it. Those developers have had to take the money out of their profits and put it onto the roads. If, if we don't make the developer do it, then it falls totally back on the county. If that road becomes substandard, the county's gonna have to go out there and fix it, just like we've already done in two or three other subdivisions where the developer has failed to do his part. The county's had to go back and spend the taxpayers' dollars to fix these roads.
Yeah, and, and I understand it's within a development. I fully understand what you're saying, but this is a county road. And so, I, I guess I'm just looking at it a little different, 'cause, um, it's never been really, if, like I say, I'm on it every day now and it, it, it's obvious it's never really been maintained because it was Coleman Lane. There was no traffic on it because Mr. The Bevins have owned that farm forever. There's no other buildings on either side of Coleman Lane, all the way down through there. So they were the only ones basically using it to access that part of the farm, I'm sure. Well, at one time, we do know that there were two homes. Yeah, yeah.
No, that, that's not the only people that use that road either.
Well, I, no, I use.
Arlington's just a right around from that. People come off of Arlington, if they're going to Georgetown, they cut across Coleman and it's.
I won't extend this any longer, but I just wanted to voice my opinion on what I kind of thought would be a good deal to work this thing out.
Mr. Langford, I think it's your choice. If you want us to vote tonight, we'll vote tonight. If you wanna investigate a little bit more and bring it back next month, that's, I think that'd already be your choice.
Well, I think what we're, what we're asking tonight is to vote on this plan. If this plan gets voted down, we can present a new plan. But this is the plan that seems to work best for us. I'm not sure how you guys feel about it. Uh, I think I want you to vote on this plan. If I get this plan approved, I'll say to you, uh. So, and I'm sure he's not doing it for that reason, but I just got to thinking about it, and it, you know, and it is gonna create a sizable revenue every year for the county. So I think that the county should take part of the responsibility, and if it's gonna be improved, to do those, to help do those improvements. And, and when I saw that, I thought, well, that's perfect, because I, I never seen that option before, when we're talking about these kinda things. And, so if that's an option that we're, that we can go with, personally, I think that's the best option. I just don't know how complicated that would be to get the money lined out, who's gonna pay this, and who's gonna pay that, if it's a fifty-fifty. I think it should be a fifty-fifty deal, personally, but, and it shouldn't be that hard to then get it worked out.
I was just gonna add, I mean, obviously, we can't speak for the county.
I know, I know, I know.
We can't speak for the county, that's something that would have to be worked out between the applicant and fiscal court, if that, if that could work, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I kinda like that idea too, if the county would pick it up. But it's a county Dutton, I feel like it still should be part of the developer to take care of it. It's a policy we've been following for years. Other subdivisions have had to do it. Those developers have had to take the money out of their profits and put it onto the roads. If, if we don't make the developer do it, then it falls totally back on the county. If that road becomes substandard, the county's gonna have to go out there and fix it. Just like we've already done in two or three other subdivisions, where the developer has failed to do his part, the county's had to go back and spend the taxpayers' dollars to fix these roads.
Yeah, and, and I understand, it's within a development, I fully understand what you're saying. But this is a county road. And so, I, I guess I'm just looking at it a little different, 'cause it's never been really, like I say, I'm on it every day now, and it, it, it's obvious, it's never really been maintained, because it was Coleman Lane. There was no traffic on it, because Mr. Bevins have owned that farm forever. There's no other buildings on either side of Coleman Lane, all the way down through there. So they were the only ones basically using it to access that part of the farm, I'm sure. Well, at one time, we do know that there were two homes, yeah, yeah.
No, that, that's not the only people that use that road either.
Well, I, no, I use it.
Arlington's just a right around from that. People come off of Arlington, if they're going to Georgetown, they cut across Coleman, and it's.
I won't extend this any longer, but I just wanted to voice my opinion on what I kinda thought would be a good deal to work this thing out.
Mr. Langford, I think it's your choice. If you want us to vote tonight, we'll vote tonight. If you wanna investigate a little bit more and bring it back next month, I think that'd already be your choice.
Well, I think what we're, what we're asking tonight is to vote on this plan. If this plan gets voted down, we can present a new plan. But this is the plan that seems to work best for us, I'm not sure how you guys feel about it. I think I want you to vote on this plan. If I get this plan approved, I'll say to you, Mr. Shirley, I will personally talk with Mr. Bevins, and, and go with Mr. Bevins to talk with the fiscal court, see if we can get him.
There's no way that I could, uh.
I'm just giving you that personal assurance.
Yeah, but I'm just to let you know, and I don't know if this is proper protocol, whatever, but I'm not, I'm not gonna vote yes on this.
I understand.
Unless I know that that partnership could be worked out, and we've got a solid solution to get the road improvement done.
No, I understand.
I can't vote in the maybes.
No, I understand that. But at least I'll have some idea, I don't wanna leave anything on the table. I'll have some idea of what to tell Mr. Bevins.
Does anybody else have any more comments on it, or?
My comment would be, we have a policy, I think it's been, it's been applied for several years now, in, in other situations. I, I realize it's very expensive to put in a foot and a half of pavement over seventeen hundred feet, but if it's gonna be done, it's gotta be done right now. Once those houses are built there, those peop-, that's not ever gonna be divided again. There will be no subdivision of that property. So it'll be up to the county to make any improvements on the road.
I agree.
Does this policy say that you've got to have a driveway off of Coleman Lane? Does the policy say that the subdivision that you've got, that road has got to have an opening to go into that subdivision, of that particular road?
I think it's just, I think it's just 'cause it even borders Coleman Lane, it has to be widened, right?
Yeah, it has to have sufficient infrastructure, it has to be served by sufficient infrastructure, so it doesn't specify that a driveway has to be off of, off of the infrastructures. Really, in this case, you know, the property happens to be at an intersection, some traffic is gonna use Iron Works, some is gonna use Coleman Lane, so it's going to impact that infrastructure that, that it's serving.
And I would remind you too, that we've already approved a, a development plan for Bluegrass Baptist Church at the end of Coleman Lane and Iron Works, that may in the future have five hundred to a thousand members exiting there at one time.
That's on the other side of Coleman, isn't it?
No, it's right on Coleman.
No, it's on there on that corner.
Opposite side from Mr. Bevins.
No, I mean the opposite side of the road, from the Bevins property. Well, it's not right for Mr. Bevins to have to accommodate for the.
It's not, but, not, not to accommodate them, but I'm saying, that's, that's how much potential traffic could be coming across that road.
That's why I think it oughta be a shared expense.
And that's another one that could be thrown in the mix.
Mr. Chairman, may I make, I don't wanna unduly prolong it, but let me say this. We filed the plan originally with four entrances on Coleman Lane, two of which were new, two which weren't. And we were advised at that time that you're gonna have to widen the road, because you're bringing too many entrances on Coleman Lane. Well, okay, we'll see what we can do about that. We revised the plan to go back to the two existing. And so now we have only two, we took away two. But we're now told the same thing, well, you still gotta widen Coleman Lane. We addressed the issue and the question at the time, but now we're saying, well, okay, that's all right, you did, but we still think you oughta widen Coleman Lane. I'm looking for a level playing field, and I know that's what you guys are looking for. If we can get it approved like this, I think we've got our level playing field. We did what we were asked to do, we tried to mitigate it, we did mitigate it by changing the plan. Jared Stevens, our engineer, spent time doing that. So now, where do we go if we change the plan again? Are we gonna get the same thing? Well, you're, you're putting more traffic in the area, we think oughta widen Coleman, I don't know. That would yet to be seen. But I think I can get another, you know, well, let's go ahead and vote on it. I'm okay, let's vote on it. Yeah, let's vote on it.
No disrespect, but to me, if we level the playing field, then the folks that had to do this in the past, we just kinda kicked them in the tail. That's my opinion. If we level the playing field, we need to do it for everybody from here on out. But the people in the past, we just kicked them in the tail, 'cause they followed a policy that we've had in place for years. If we wanna change the policy, we've had that opportunity over the last year, through our comp plan update, to change this policy. I don't think now's the time to change the policy, that's just my opinion.
I'm done speaking, if anybody else wants to see any more comments, Mr. Wiseman?
Mr. Cannon asked a question a moment ago. Did we, in essence, promise last time that if they made the change, we would approve it? From what you're saying, we essentially did. If you made the change, it is too, too.
I disagree on that also.
And we said if you came back with a different plan, that you would approve, we, we would approve it. No, sir.
No, didn't say that. He said that we're, we're putting too many entrances on Coleman Lane to not widen Coleman Lane. He said, we've got two already, you're putting two more on, that means you should widen Coleman Lane. Well, we'll take two off. He didn't say, if you bring it back with two, we'll approve it. No, he did not say that. But the implication was, if you lessen the impact on Coleman Lane, which we're saying is none, other than what's there now, then the implication is it would be approved, but he did not say that.
So we didn't give you a promise, but we gave you hope.
No, 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 no. No, I can't get promised out of Joe for anything. No, he, he, I have to tell you, he did not say that.
My personal opinion, without any additional driveways, it's as-is. We're not changing Coleman Lane at all.
You are changing Coleman Lane, 'cause you're adding more traffic to it every day.
But the five new, or four new proposed driveways are on Iron Works.
It don't matter, that's, Iron Works has gotta lead to somewhere, Coleman Lane leads to Iron Works, Coleman Lane leads to twenty-five, those roads are already improved, Coleman Lane needs to be improved. That's the policy we have.
The problem we have is Article One, Section One sixty-five. We gonna follow it or not follow it?
Well, you can vary it, we vary everything, almost every application that comes in here has a variance attached to it. That's part of your regulation. Variances aren't anything new, they're part of the regulation. Right, Charlie? Where'd you go, Charlie?
Also, that's.
I went to the other side of the table from your last comment.
That statement says may deny, doesn't say have to deny.
I made note of that too, Frank.
The very policy probably need either to specifically tell why it's different in this situation, this isn't the usual, or you need to go change the policy, and then come back and deal with it. If you've got a policy and it otherwise appears to apply, you need to apply it. Or we need to say, table this thing, let's go back and review the policy, it looks like it needs to change. And then if you change it, well then, as Rob said, then everybody expected they're on. No, variances are for things like thirty-foot setbacks, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot building lines. Those, those are the things you vary it. You don't vary your policies. You, you have a policy, or you go back, you study and find out it's outlive its usefulness.
For me personally, I think it would be, if we were gonna require the road to be widened, and Jimmy and Bruce knew that ahead of time, it would be way smarter for these driveways to empty on to Coleman Lane, which is a much lesser-traveled road, safer.
Yeah, we knew it when we read.
Thirty-five, forty miles an hour, instead of fifty or fifty-five, and.
We, we knew it when we read the staff report the first time. That's when we knew that that would be a requirement.
I'm not sure what the difference is between these driveways emptying on Iron Works or emptying on Coleman. If, if a person's gonna come, pull on to, to Iron Works, and then immediately turn on Coleman to come back to Georgetown, then it's the same thing as driveway emptying on the Coleman.
Exactly.
But I think the fairest ways to, to treat anything is to try to, is to try to be consistent in the way you do it.
Any other comments?
Did you, Bruce, did you say that y'all knew it the first time when you came in here? That it was, that it was like, the policy was like this, is that what you said?
We knew it when we filed the zone change application and filed our plan the first time. That's the reason we asked for approval of the zone change, and then later work on the issues of widening Coleman Lane, fencing, and landscaping. We knew it at that time, we didn't know it other than that, no. I knew it, it was gonna be applied this way, when I read Matthew's staff report here the other day for the first time, because we filed a different plan. We didn't know it until then. I thought, well, we got a break now. We won't have to widen Coleman Lane, because we're taking the traffic off of Coleman Lane, taking the entrances off. That's what I understood from Joe, Joe didn't say it that way. But he said, because you're increasing the entrances, anyway, I'm repeating now, you're increasing the entrances, you're, you're gonna have to widen Coleman Lane. Well, we'll take, we'll diminish the entrances. Still gotta widen Coleman Lane. Something about that doesn't ring right. To me. I'm on this side, you're on that side.
Anything else?
I would suggest you go back and do some other things to try to get it done, in my opinion. That's my opinion.
You mean to go, mess the four lots, or what?
I, I don't know.
Or go to.
I don't know, but it's, it's, I don't think so far like this.
He's asked, he's asked for a vote on this application, I think we take the vote.
Let me have half a second with Joe.
Yes, sir.
Just a second.
Give me a vote.
All right, he's asked for a vote. No more comments, questions, let's take the vote. Need a motion to approve or disapprove.
We vote on the variance first, number seven, or we get it separate? We vote on it all?
No, he's wanting a, a vote on the final plat, all right?
Well, I think, I think what we need to do is move, move for approval, but it's, it's with or without widening of the road. Because if we're enforcing the widening of the road, that's the only issue.
So we're gonna vote on two separate issues, the final plat and the variance separate?
We're not denied it.
We can do that, we've done that before in the past.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I thought that's what you were suggesting, Mr. Smith.
I don't think anybody.
I would say somebody needs to make a motion, but we can just strike condition seven, if we wanna approve it.
Which is a widening of the road.
Yes, I'm sure.
I, I would make the motion that we approve ZMA two thousand sixteen dash forty-eight. With the. Say the ten conditions we need to remove, uh. Condition seven would be removed.
So you wanna remove the, you don't wanna see Coleman Lane completed?
No, no, that says all improvements to new Coleman Lane shall be completed prior to the approval of the final subdivision.
Yeah, I thought you were for that.
Oh, well, I guess that can stay there again. This is the final plat, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
So with condition seven.
The variance is to remove that condition seven. I don't see a lot of point in it.
I think we just make, make the number seven, say all improvements to new Coleman Lane shall be completed.
That's, that's what it says.
I don't see a lot of sense in, in voting on this separately. The only issue we have, correct me if I'm wrong, is the improvement of Coleman Lane being the developer's responsibility. Am I not correct? Otherwise, we weren't, we wouldn't have a problem with this.
We've already approved it. It was, the only thing we left though, was, was we would settle this after the.
All I'm saying is, I, I, I cannot imagine why we would vote on this separate, because it's all hinging on this one variance request, so we just vote on the whole.
So you're gonna.
The way I'm looking at it, the way I'm looking at it, we vote on it, if we vote and approve it, then they still have to approve, uh, improve the road. We can go ahead and approve the final plat, but they still have to improve the road, that's the way it's reading to me. Am I, am I correct, John, or am I?
Or somebody can make the motion to approve it, striking number seven.
Or.
But if you strike number seven, they're not going to.
But we don't, that's not what Stevens want to do, Stevens wants to keep that in there, so.
My, my motion would be to include option one. Which is, use the current policy of improving substandard roads along major developments.
Wouldn't that just be then to approve.
Approve this application, the way it's, the way it reads.
Yes.
Subject ten, ten conditions.
Except that, except that, uh, condition number seven is, probably needs, needs to be reworded. Instead of saying shall be completed prior to the approval, let's just say all improvements to new Coleman Lane shall be.
Well, but by approval, what it means is, our signing it, it goes into the record. You're actually approving it tonight, but then when they do all the stuff they need to do, that's when we sign it, it goes to record, that's when they start selling lots.
My, my big issue, I, I think we need to stick with, if we're gonna have a policy, we need to be consistent in the way we apply. We don't need to be.
All over the Georgia.
Make exceptions, we want not next.
So is everybody understanding that? I think Stevens' motion is for approval of the application, as it reads right now, with all ten conditions.
That'd be a yes, wouldn't it?
That would be a yes.
If we don't agree with all the conditions.
If you don't agree with the conditions, vote no. Does that make sense to everyone? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smith to accept the application with all ten conditions. I'll need a second.
A second?
Second by Mr. Moran. We'll do a roll call, please. Mr. Wiseman?
No.
Ms. Mizell?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes, I mean, whoa, whoa, Mr. Chairman, let me make sure this is going back and forth, I'm gonna make absolute certainty. A yes is that we are approving this with all ten.
Conditions.
Conditions.
So the road has to be improved.
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Solsky?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
I'll vote yes. Let's go, everybody, right? Motion approved, final plat approved with the ten conditions approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
I do think we need to look at this policy some more, though, 'cause this, uh.
Bruce?
This is not, it's not spelled out clear enough, I don't think, for.
Well, as we get more and more development coming on, which we're gonna have, we probably need to look at it.
It's not that often we have a development that fronts on two roads.
Yeah.
Maybe, I guess we have had developments in front on three roads.
Matt, can you look that up? Thank you, Matt. Next up is, uh, Kane Wood, PSP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-three, Kane Wood, Unit One C, Section Four, amended.
Okay. Um, this is a request to amend a preliminary subdivision plat for Kane Wood, Unit One C, Section Four. Uh, this application is at the end of Masters. It's the area in Kane Wood, uh, where the bypass was, was proposed. At the time, the original preliminary for this area was approved in two thousand and one. The bypass alignment wasn't finalized. Since that time, uh, the bypass has been finalized and constructed, and it took a portion of the previous, um, preliminary plat lot area. So this is the previous preliminary plat, two thousand one dash seven-one. And it included thirty-five single-family lots, uh, with these two cul-de-sacs. And as you can see, the bypass took out, um, a large portion of the area. At the time this was approved, the developer went forward and platted some of these lots, so I think eleven of these lots were platted. The lots were sold, houses were constructed, so there are houses constructed on a portion of this area. They waited to plat the remainder until the bypass was finalized. After it went in, and the sound wall was put in, all the improvements were done. Um, they've, they're coming back now to kinda finish out this area. So the application, uh, we're seeing tonight is basically the same application that you reviewed two months ago and denied. At the time, uh, the applicant was asking for setback variances on these two interior lots, so Lot Seven and Lot Twelve, they're double-frontage lots. Because they're double-frontage, they have two front setbacks. So they're, they're sometimes, with these irregular double-frontage lots, there can be an issue with the rear and the side setbacks. You still have to meet a rear setback on one of, on one side. So they were asking at the time for a variance to the rear setback, to reduce that to fifteen feet on just these two lots, so they would have one seven-and-a-half-foot side yard and one, uh, fifteen-foot rear yard, and then the two front setbacks. Uh, there was a discussion about the setback. Uh, there was a discussion about the setbacks and about the HOA requirements, um, and at that time, uh, the planning commission decided, uh, because of those two issues, to deny the, uh, preliminary plat. Month later, there was a resubmital of this same plat, removing the request for the variances on the two lots. Uh, to recap, these lots meet the minimum, this is owned R one B, single-family, which is our, um, our second-tier low-density residential. It requires a eighty-foot lot width, minimum of ten thousand square foot lot area, three-point-six, uh, units, um, per net acre of density. This is a planned unit development, so throughout Cane Wood, there was flexibility given in the lot sizes, uh, the lot widths and arrangement, uh, as long as the den, underlying density was maintained. And this does meet the R one B density, um, does meet the R one B minimum lot size, so the minimum lot size is ten thousand square foot. These are, I think, the smallest lot, it's eleven thousand, uh, in change. The density is three-point-five-eight, uh, units per net acre, the, the average lot width is seventy-two feet, which is compatible to the other lots in the area that are on cul-de-sacs. Uh, where if, on these cul-de-sacs, they're kind of pie-shaped, uh, in order to, to fit them around the cul-de-sac bulbs. So, we did recommend approval, uh, on the previous plat, because it did, these lot sizes and arrangement did conform to the general layout, uh, in Cane Wood. With the ten conditions, uh, I guess the main one is that they meet, that these lots are required to join the HOA with the adjoining, uh, same HOA that's in place for the adjoining lots. And they meet, they conform with the new City of Georgetown Common Scheme of Development ordinance, which requires, um, HOA consistency between, from phase to phase. Um, and we are, um, recommending that, uh, they be approved without the, without the variances, and they're not, they're not requesting the, any variances, uh, with this layout. So, I guess to summarize, this, this plat hasn't changed from the previous one that you reviewed, um, but they are not requesting the variances on those two lots. Uh, other than that, it, it hasn't changed at all. We did ask at TRC that they look at, um, kind of the cost benefit of not doing this, this cul-de-sac, and just, um, do some longer lots along this main Masters Road. And in doing that, they could reduce the number of lots to eight, uh, but with, they would, they would get rid of the construction costs, um, involved with building that cul-de-sac. But then they would lose the value of those two, um, two lot, two extra lots that they would lose. I haven't gotten any numbers back, um, from them, but I think they've, after looking at it, decided that it wasn't, it wasn't worthwhile for them to, to do that. So, we are still recommending approval, because this layout does conform with the previous layout of an already, um, approved plat that's on the books now. So, this plat was previously approved, essentially the same sizes, uh, arrangement of lots, uh, as you're seeing here. That's all I had, um, but-
Do you want to have any questions for Joe?
Be happy to take questions now or after the applicant or the neighbors, uh, comment.
Anybody have any questions for Joe right now? Thank you, Joe. The applicant, here to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Rory, Kaylee, the EA Partners, um, once again, I stand here in agreement with Joe's staff report, request approval. I would like to, if we could go back a couple of pictures, there are one with the big red line in it, yeah, that one's not accurate. The area in the top corner of the triangle, it's a little shaded area, looks like, must be a lot of contours. Oh, alright, that is actually the area that was extra taken-
This?
Above that, that, yeah, that triangle there, that is where more road was taken for the bypass. That is the only thing that got smaller, um, and when I say smaller, that is just for the developable area. The plats that creates the sub, we did a minor plat that recorded the yet-to-be-developed area at the end of Masters Drive. That defines the area that is the subdivision plan before you. That is the one that we have ten lots shown on, and all of those lots are larger than the zone's requirements. In this picture here, would be the right corner of the drawing, yeah, that is that triangle where the right-of-way got wider, that was the extra taking of land. It did not cut through, uh, Joe, if you can go to the previous one. Those, those cul-de-sacs that you see there, and all the lots that are surrounding them, um, previous plan had eleven buildable lots on those two cul-de-sacs, were before you for ten.
But this is all one lot, I mean, this, anywhere?
Yeah, we did, well, yeah, when we lowered one lot, we changed it, but it's that triangle there at the top, where the wall was built for the contours, and, and going down to the, the bridge over the river. That was the area that got larger. Yeah. We're, we're in agreement with those ten conditions, we request approval, um, I'll answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Stand up. Something's over, thank you. Anyone in attendance want to speak? Mr. Burke?
What people here fail to understand-
State your name, Mr. Burke.
Okay.
State your name, Mr. Burke.
My name is Bill Burke, I live at two zero three, The Masters, and- That's my house, right there.
Can you go back to that, uh, one with the red line, Joe, so he can show us where his house is on that one?
Probably that's one down.
Yeah.
Be a third. There's one down, with it on the low tree.
Where's your house at on that, Mr. Burke?
Probably right here. Right here, one of these two. Back to where I was saying, what, what everybody fails to understand, and think what planning and zoning fails to understand, and what the developer fails to understand, is that Cane Wood is a subdivision. Cane Wood does not have one HOA ordinance, it has several HOA ordinance, because Cane Wood has several sections. We have the Cane Wood Reserve, we have, uh, the Bluffs of Cane Wood, which is where I live, uh, we have other sections of Cane Wood. And each one of those sections has different lot sizes, and different configurations, and different, uh, different, um, home construction methods, okay? They all look different. There are some areas of Cane Wood where you can have vinyl siding on three sides, and then there's areas of Cane Wood where you can't have vinyl siding on any sides. There are some sections of Cane Wood where you can have a seventy-two-foot lot size in the front, and then there are sections of Cane Wood where you can't, it must be an eighty-foot section of lot size. And I think that's where we're getting all wrapped around the axle here, is when we say, "Oh, gosh, well, there's other places in Cane Wood like that," well, there sure are, okay? Joe, if you'll go back to a slide, I'll show you an area where it is. Okay, if you'll look in this area, okay, in this area, yeah, those are smaller lots, those are smaller houses, they have seventy-two foot, where the houses going up and down the Bluffs of Cane Wood over here, and then backing up to the golf course, have eighty-foot road frontage. They don't have seventy-two foot. Okay, my biggest concern, okay, and, and, and what you gentlemen need to consider, is when we make zone changes like this, and I said it earlier, and, and I said feng shui, and Charlie kind of giggled at me, but it, it's, it's, they should look like they've always been there. Do what?
I said, "I enjoyed it."
Yeah, uh, it, it should look like it's always been there, okay? When these houses are finished, they should look like they were built ten years ago, the same lot size, same construction methods. The cul-de-sac, okay, that we're gonna put here, should look just like the one that we have further down the street over in here. The cul-de-sacs at the end of this street should be the same size as Stone Brook Court. And if you don't do that, and if you change that significantly, then it changes the look of the neighborhood. It looks like somebody shoehorned a bunch of houses down the end of the street, not to make the neighborhood look good, but to make the bottom line look good. Yeah, everybody has their own bottom line, the developer has his bottom line, I have my bottom line, my bottom line is what I have invested in my home. My bottom line is what my neighbors have invested in their homes, and that's all we're asking, is that you make it look like it was always there. You make it look like nothing ever changed. You can't take a hundred and fifty feet of bypass and shove everything forward and say, "Wow, this is the same thing we had before," because it's not, there's a hundred and fifty feet difference. You have any questions for me?
I do, Mr. Burke, we talked Monday, and, and I don't know if anybody was at our workshop on Monday, that, about HOA and making sure they're in compliance. So, these eight or ten lots would be part of your HOA, correct?
They would be part of the Cane, the Bluffs of Cane Wood.
So, with the ordinance, that we cannot as a commission, um, make sure that they, they are within the guidelines of the HOA's bylaws, um-
If, if they are built exactly like the Bluffs of Cane Wood, like the other homes in that area, like the homes on Stone Brook Court, with the same circle size, uh, or, or the same cul-de-sac size, the same lot size, the same setbacks, I have no problem with it.
We discussed this on Monday, is again, we're not gonna be as a commission responsible for them complying with the HOA, but the applicant said they would be complying with the HOA. So, if we were looking to approve this, we then in fact would be leaving it open to interpretation and approval by the HOA.
Let's make sure they're complying to the right section of the Homeowners Association, because as I said before, there's several different sections in Cane Wood.
How old is your house?
My house is eleven years old.
Okay.
I've been staring at those empty lots for eleven years.
The build that, the previous, I mean, originally, the plan was for two cul-de-sacs, correct?
Uh, that's what they tell me, uh, initially, when we, when we purchased our home, they shoved across a piece of paper and said, "Here's what it's gonna look like," and they showed one cul-de-sac with nothing across the street. Somehow, sometime later, that's been changed.
Now, these cul-de-sac lots cannot have an eighty-foot, an eighty-foot front yard, can they? They're, they're, they're in a pie shape.
Well, they could, I guess, I don't know, what do we have on Stone Brook Court? All I'm saying is, if they are the same as what we already have there, I have no issue with this. If these homes have the same lot sizes as, as Stone Brook Court, and the same home sizes, and the same, uh, construction requirements, I have no objection to this. I just want to make sure we have that, I want to make sure the cul-de-sac is the same size, because I know that if you go over in here, these other little cul-de-sacs are much, much smaller.
Bill, I think what we, what we have been discussing is that maybe we should approve it, because it meets our requirements, and then, then they've got to come to you in the HOA to see if it meets your requirements.
If you, if you have that caveat in there, I have no objection to that, if it meets the HOA requirements, but once you approve this, okay? It has to be in your language that they have to come to the HOA for approval, otherwise, it's, it's, it's null and void. If you approve this and don't put that language in there, then they're off to the races.
Can I say something else, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The only place where you and I disagree, Mr. Burke, uh, is, I have no problem at all with putting it in there, that this is subject to the same HOA conditions as the rest of this section.
Is the, yeah, is, is that right there?
As the Bluffs.
Okay.
I, I have no problems thus doing that, because that's simply putting them on notice, if they've made some kind of mistake, that puts them on notice. I do, however, uh, disagree that we can say in there, "It's conditioned upon them complying with your homeowners," we don't have authority to do that, it's a private contract. Now, the city's passed an ordinance that says, "We need to keep an eye on it to make sure they keep it in the right HOA," and, and we do that. I even wonder about that sometime, but, but we do that, uh, but we can't enforce that.
So, that, so, let me, let me back up, let's see if we got this right, you talked five minutes ago about having a policy, uh, that, that you had in a regulation, okay, that had been, that had been-
Yeah, that this has to be included in the same HOA.
Let me back up, that had been codified, and city council passed an ordinance that has been codified, and you're telling me you have no authority to enforce it?
We can make sure that it's part of the proper HOA, not, you know, down the road where there's seventy-two-foot lots or some other place.
So, who does that, if not planning and zoning?
The HOA enforces its individual provisions. We, we don't do that, we can't do anything, we, for example, you come back here next month and say, "They're, they're building something that is fifty square feet smaller than our minimum, uh, house size." We can't do that.
I wish if you're gonna pass it on, you'd make it cash, okay? Because we are passing the buck here, I think the buck stops here, you're telling me the buck doesn't stop here.
That's a private con, we can't do that, what the city has done is to make sure that all the private contracts line up, but we don't have authority to enforce private contracts. Any more than when you bought your property, we can enforce provisions of that contract, that's between private individuals, that's not us.
And the-
That's not the fiscal court, it's not the council, it's not anybody. All we can do is make sure that when they come in with their plats, that they're consistent, if this is phase three, uh, and it's got all the same conditions, we can make sure that that last phase of it has the same conditions.
And you give approval, and they run off willy-nilly and do whatever the hell they want after that, that's okay?
Well, no, it's in violation of contracts.
Oh.
We can assure that it's subject to the contract, but we can't enforce private contracts.
So, let me ask you a question.
Certainly.
Why do you guys have an attorney?
Not to enforce private contracts, we've never done that.
We can't do that.
No.
If, if you don't, if you don't have to follow ordinances, if you don't, if you don't have to follow the codes-
But they, but they do, they just-
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, your HOA is a contract between you and that landowner, between the HOA and that landowner, we have nothing to do with that.
And so, I'm asking you to make sure that these folks are gonna follow what's in the HOA, that the lot sizes are gonna be the same, everything is-
We can't enforce that, we have nothing to enforce.
But the city passed an ordinance, and you guys are half-city.
Making sure these ten lots are subject to the appropriate HOA, and that's part of this.
So, how do you do that?
How do we do what?
But, but your, your, your big argument right now is that you think these are based on the seventy-five-foot lot size, not on eighty-foot?
Seventy-two foot is what he just said.
Your lot's seventy-two foot wide.
Uh, my lot's a little wider than that, in fact.
No. Uh-oh.
Uh, maybe in trouble.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna expect cash out of you.
This is your lot. Yeah, I'm sucking wind. I didn't want to do it, this is your lot, your back lot is sixty-eight at the back, the front, the two curves, this is curved table, you look at, uh, you had nine and eight together, seventy-two point, some change.
They say that brevity is a virtue, okay? Franklin Roosevelt said, "Be brief, be sincere, and be succeeded," thank you very much.
Do you still feel that, that these lots do not match with what is there currently?
You just don't think we're the same size, mine, I'm good with that.
We have on our plan, the lot size of all lots, every one of those is larger than Mr. Burke's lot. Of the first section, actually, you know, three, his section, all of these that are recorded, there are only three lots in our proposed area that's smaller than their biggest one.
Smaller than seventy-two feet?
Well, well, the, the, the full area, the lot area.
Are they all seventy-two feet across?
Yes, we have that much at the building lines.
Okay.
At the building line.
This build houses?
Yeah. Oh, and we, we have the restrictions as well, we've got those, um, they're recorded here, and it is, this set is written specifically to his plat.
The Bluffs of Cane Wood.
Lots one through six, and lots eighteen through twenty-five.
Okay.
So, there was a set written specifically- So there was a set written specifically for the lots that govern him.
And that's what I wanna make sure of.
And then there'll also be the overall Kane Wood agreements as well.
When I made the statement, Rory, you were shaking your head, "No," though.
Which one?
When I made the statement about complying with the HOA and you were going like that.
Oh, well...
What was that?
I don't do the laws for it, but I, as I read through this, it talks about the developer shall, and I believe that the developer in this case, for these ten lots, is different than the developer of these. And one, one recorded section does not have the right to govern the next recorded section, 'cause each one of these talks about the developer shall, you know, meet the requirements. So he has to do that for his ten lots, and those who are already recorded there don't get to review his plans, don't get a say in it. I'm assuming with your new laws that Snap Hook, the new development, has to join with them, that this group, either the bluffs or the Kane Wood in general, are somehow binded to accept them. Sometimes I run into areas where others...
I think you're wrong.
I I don't know, those HOA things, that's beyond us.
I'm thinking they should be separate.
We don't even wanna know about no HOAs, that's why I look at them. Uh, can you come up and state your name, please?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Rob McGudwin, uh, I represent, um, uh, Snap Hook Development. And, uh, the the point I'd like to make to the commission tonight, uh, there are two issues here. We're in agreement, uh, uh, through the city ordinance, uh, to, uh, subject these ten lots to the Kane Wood HOA, Homeowners Association. But simultaneously, we have also agreed, and we will agree with filing the plat, is that we will conform with all of the regulations and all of the requirements and restrictions of all of the lots that surround these lots. So everything, you know, from Mr. Burke on back, all of our lots will have the same footprint, footprint requirements. They will have, you know, for, for a one-story, one-and-a-half-story, a two-story, they'll have the same requirements for brick or siding and so forth. None of that's gonna change. We've already agreed to make everything fit in, and our lot size is as big or greater than what the ordinance requires and what ninety-seven percent of all the lots in this adjacent section already are. So, we're doing the HOA and we're gonna agree to this.
Crow, don't have a bad taste, once you get past the feet.
I guess that's okay.
Does anyone else have any comments in the audience, anyone else?
I may be big, but I'll take my lumps when they come.
Anyone from the commission? Mr. Cannon, do you have something?
No, I, Charlie answered my question.
Does anyone else have any comments? If not, when you take us a vote, be it a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve file number PSP two oh one six five three with the ten recommendations from staff.
We have a motion by Mr. Shirley, who was the second?
Second.
Mr. Wiseman with the second.
Ten recommendations, ten, ten conditions.
Ten conditions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion approved.
Next item of business is PDP twenty sixteen dash fifty-four Georgetown Center Parcel A.
Okay, this is a request for an amended preliminary development plan for Parcel A of Georgetown Center. This is the center that includes the Kmart store. It's, uh, split into three parcels. I'll show it on the plat in a second, but Parcel A includes the Kmart store and these retail, um, well, actually, the Kmart store in the rear of this retail area. Parcel two is, uh, these retail stores. Parcel three is the big lot store in the parking lot. So the request is to amend the development plan for the Kmart store and add a fourteen thousand square foot retail building in the part, corner of the parking lot. Uh, and then, uh, remove existing parking and, uh, reconfigure the parking in front of the building, and then reconfigure kind of the circulation around the building and the parking in the rear. This is the landscape plan, which I will get to in a second. This property is zone B two Highway Commercial. Highway Commercial is our general commercial district, allows most retail, um, automotive-related, commercial restaurants, and basically everything but, but light commercial, um, manufacturing. This lot, um, if you've been in Georgetown for any amount of time, you've noticed that this lot is usually empty. So it's, it's, it's not very well utilized. And also, there's a, uh, cross-access and parking agreement between the three parcels. So all the parking in front of big lots in these retail, um, stores share, share the parking with the Kmart Center parking area. So all these, um, basically you can park anywhere and visit any of the stores without, uh, anybody enforcing any type of parking violations on you. Because it's underutilized, we think this is a good, um, potential redevelopment site. So the main issue is whether this building is too big and requires too much parking to be, um, accommodated at this location. The existing number of parking spaces out there now is seven hundred and twenty-eight. The building itself will remove ninety-nine spaces. They'll have to, they'll be able to reconfigure and pick up some parking in front of the building on this aisle and then over here in front of the building. Uh, so they'll pick up nineteen spaces, so there'll be a net loss of eighty parking spaces. So, post-development, after this is in, there'll be six hundred and forty-eight spaces. The majority are in front of the buildings, but there's also parking, uh, along the rear of all three parcels. So that's a, that's a, uh, finished parking ratio of one space for two hundred and sixty-eight square, gross square feet. Generally, our highest generators, the retail or restaurants with drive-throughs or fast food restaurants, um, we require one space for one hundred and fifty square feet. More office or low commercial generators are one to three hundred, roughly. Uh, so this is somewhere in between. And then you also have to consider, this is a gross ratio, so a lot of these, um, larger big boxes have a lot of warehousing, storage, areas that aren't kind of public spaces, retail spaces. So a good portion of this Kmart building and the big lots building, and some of these retail buildings are, are not public spaces. So on average, about twenty percent of the building is kind of storage, warehousing, stocking areas. So, this, this parking ratio, uh, based on kind of anecdotal stuff, drive-by, um, not any, um, parking studies have been done, but just by the utilization of this lot over time and the ratio that's, that's, um, proposed after development, we think it's, um, sufficient to accommodate, um, a building of this size. Yeah, also, um, you have to take into consideration that there's a shared parking agreement. So, you know, if, if one area gets, uh, a heavy user, you know, it can, it can be accommodated a little bit off the parcel. So, if you look at our standard parking requirements, this site would require a variance of twenty spaces. So our requirement would be for four hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces, they can only provide four, four eighteen, and that's, that's on this one parcel. As I said, it's split into three, actually, three parcels and two ownerships. So there's one owner for Parcel A and Parcel B, the big lots is a separate owner, but they're part of that agreement. So we think, um, with the parking out there, the fact that there's a shared parking agreement, we think it's, uh, reasonable to grant a variance of twenty spaces, uh, for this, um, uh, new retail building. Although I didn't add it in the staff report, you may wanna consider, um, if there's a heavy, heavy traffic generating use, um, like a big restaurant, um, that may generate a lot of traffic, uh, more than the retail use that you maybe leave it to the discretion of the planning staff, whether to bring that back, um, to Planning Commission. Because, um, if there was a restaurant that just went into this retail building, because restaurants are permitted in this district, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come back through Planning Commission for approval. But you may wanna consider adding that condition. Also, they're not proposing a drive-through, so if, uh, say, a restaurant with a drive-through came, came in, that, that would be a minor development plan typically to, that would be reviewed and approved by staff to just add a drive-through to this building. So you may, may wanna consider if you think it's, if, if you're worried about parking and like a heavy user going in this, in this area, to require them to come back through Planning Commission if, if they need to amend this development plan to, to accommodate a large restaurant with the drive-through. Just, just a suggestion based on comments from workshop. Some other issues we have with redevelopment sites is our signage, for one. I'm recommending that there be no, uh, freestanding signage for this building, so any, any freestanding sign be added to the existing pole signs that are out there, 'cause there's, there's two kind of signs that there's ability to share signage, uh, for the, for the Kmart Shopping Center. So we're recommending that no new freestanding signs be added, that they share what's out there. A stormwater plan will have to be submitted along with final development plan, along with a lighting, a lighting plan. They'll have to take out some lighting in the parking lot to put this building in. So, uh, when we see the final development plan, we'll look at the, the lighting plan and the stormwater plan to make sure it, it can accommodate this building. Landscaping, they are essentially required to, um, fill in any perimeter landscaping where it's missing. So I think most of the mature, most of the perimeter landscaping is there and it's mature. But there may be one or two spots where a tree has, has died, uh, or the bushes have been torn out. Um, after the building goes in, they'll just have to fill in existing perimeter and fill in existing interior landscaping in the landscaping islands. They are not, um, um, required to meet the canopy requirement, um, because it's, it's redevelopment of a portion of a parking lot. So there's almost no way to calculate, um, new canopy required. So I'm recommending that that be waived, although it's not specifically stated in our ordinance as how we treat a situation like this. I did look at the canopy and tried to measure the existing canopy on the parcel and it, like, it was about twenty percent. And our requirement for, um, commercial sites, I think, is twenty-three percent if they save what's there. But, um, in a situation like this where they're going into a parking lot, there's almost no way to, to calculate the area that, um, that canopy can be provided, because all the existing landscaping is in place. So, we are recommending approval of the preliminary development plan for the fourteen thousand square foot retail building with the one variance to reduce, um, the parking requirement on Parcel A. Five, four thirty-eight to four eighteen. Contention upon the shared parking agreement being in place and that being, um, provided to us, which, uh, we've got the deed book in page, so, um, we'll verify that that is still active, uh, with the six conditions. Most of them are standard conditions, uh, but there is, um, I guess, two that, um, are different. And one I did mention, the other, um, is that all the parking stalls behind the building, there's a loading and unloading area. We're asking that they either use angled parking or accommodate the required turnaround in the parking aisle away or out of the loading and unloading area. So that's the other, um, unusual, um, or condition that's not standard. And, and the other one that I mentioned earlier is that no freestanding signs shall be permitted, um, for this building. That's all I had, if you had any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Joe?
I did have one quick question, Joe. If this is, I think this is a good project, uh, to try to revitalize that, that area. If there are any deficiencies right now in the landscaping of the, of that entire area, can they be addressed at this time? To go in and spruce the entire place up, you know, if there are trees that have died, uh, hedge roads and...
I believe so.
I think right now is a good opportunity to make the whole place look, look much better, not just this one corner.
I would think there'd have to be issues on this parcel, but yeah, I, I think now would be an appropriate time to address them, yeah.
Especially if you're gonna give up twenty parking, deficient twenty parking spaces, there, there are plenty of parking spaces in that area.
Yeah.
Some probably never been parked.
I did notice, looking at the canopy, trying to figure out what the canopy, uh, existing canopy coverage is, that there, it looked like a few of the, at least one of these trees looked like it was dead.
I just, if they're gonna be in there eventually, who knows when somebody will locate there, but if something happens, then I think we need to take the time to make sure that the entire parking lot's brought up, brought up to, to our standards.
In as far as the landscape islands?
Landscape islands around the perimeter. Anything that can be, that'll make improvements in the appearance.
We, yeah, I mean, feel free to suggest what you're talking...
It should be required, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, they are, they will have to address anything in the area that they're, they're disturbing. So they will have to fill in all the perimeter around the disturbed area, and then anything in the areas they're disturbing. I haven't, um, I haven't recommended any retrofitting of, of these other parking areas to meet our current requirements. I didn't even...
It may be fine, I'm just saying, if there are places where trees have died or where, you know...
Yeah.
Hedges are missing, let's bring them up to, bring them up to our standards. At least just for that parcel, that is Parcel A, right?
Yeah, Parcel A runs like this, so it's basically...
Right.
Behind the buildings here.
Not being served.
Joe, did you... You said they share that other parking lot, did you, did you figure all that in your, in your numbers?
Yeah, yeah, six forty-eight is...
That's the total for both?
That's total.
All of the parking there and that?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
So, so the stores, uh, I guess that's Parcel B or whatever, they're, they're fine with how much parking they have?
Yeah, Parcel B doesn't have a whole lot of parking. Most of the parking they have on that parcel's in the rear. They get most of their parking sharing the lot in front of big lots.
What parcel is that, is that a different parcel or something, or C?
Well, actually, they do have a couple aisles.
Oh, okay.
This is A, B, and C, so that's B and that's C. So big lots has, you know, three or four aisles, and then on the side, and they, these retail buildings have in the rear, and then...
I guess, if my question then is, is there any, uh, extra parking in those that could be counted toward that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there, I mean, there, there is.
Do you know, can I got a number?
Well, um, I don't, because, um, I didn't parse, because the development plan doesn't break it down that way, and it's hard... it down that way, and it's hard to parse it out because these, the way these lines are drawn.
I'm just saying, if they have that shared agreement parking, then the twenty spaces really don't matter much.
I mean, there's, there's probably two-hundred spots over on this side.
Yeah.
And three, three, three-hundred.
I think the big lots has, I think, fifty or sixty.
I think it was sixty that, that pretty much...
Yeah, I parked over there and walked over there and did all my shopping in one area and my parking sat inside.
Yeah, I don't know. When I go there, I just walk around there, right? Joe, another question I had, Joe, is say Kmart decides to leave, would that have, and a new tenant comes in, what would they have to do? Would they have to come to the planning commission or...
Depends on what changes they were making. Yeah, I mean, if they were just going in the building and kind of refitting out the building, they wouldn't have to come back in.
Okay.
So if they, if they expand at all, if they're tearing down and redeveloping, so if they're, you know, tear down a portion of the building and re, rebuild part of the footprint, then they would come back in. So any new, any new building, any new parking over twenty spaces, any major kind of reconfiguration of, say, those, those two I mentioned would definitely come in. If they were going to recon, do a major reconfiguration of like the parking and the driving aisles and stuff, then it would be kind of staff interpretation as to whether they come back. But any new building and, and any new parking over twenty spaces would come back.
And then, did you say this new building, it could be used for a restaurant or couldn't be?
Zoning would allow it to be used for a restaurant, so there could be a, a restaurant that went in there.
So the parking, does that matter on the parking for a restaurant or not?
Restaurants, we try to stick to one to one parking space for every one-hundred-and-fifty square feet of gross area, so that would be, that would generate typically a little more traffic than a retail store, a retail strip center.
So if they decide to go with a restaurant, would they have to come back in here or you want to cut the...
Well, I mean, you, you may want to add that as a condition if you're concerned about it. I'm not, I wouldn't be that concerned about it, but then again, if Kmart, if, you know, I don't know, you know, like a Myers or a Target went into that store, I don't know if they would, if this location would suit them, but if a...
I'm thinking more on the lines of a restaurant, like Texas Roadhouse or something, you know?
Yeah, but I mean, if, if some other retailer went in there that generated a lot more traffic and then a restaurant came in.
We just did some quick calculations. It's a difference of six spaces between retail and restaurant spaces.
I'm not worried about that.
For that size building, yeah.
Lot of parking there.
That's all questions I got. Anybody else got any questions for Joe? If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Commissioner, thank you for having us. I'm Darren Crouch with Thorbred Engineering, and so, you know, we're pleased to, you know, present this plan to them. Mr. Smith, I guess to answer your question, is the applicant, applicant does not have a problem with, with doing, you know, redoing some of that landscaping that may have died and wants we do come to, you know, get some development that, that truly starts in there. Obviously, they, they want that to be a, you know, to have...
Bring everything back up to stuff.
That's right. I mean, it's in their best interest and I don't think they have a problem with that. You know, I, I think, you know, in general, I think we all, our client agrees with the recommendations there that Joe, Joe's made and, you know, I think the parking is, is, you know, we did not do a complete parking analysis on that, but at the same rate it is, you know, to a point that it is just a couple percent low. It's not a huge, you know, we're not twenty-five or fifty percent. And, and so, you know, if you all have any additional questions for us, you know, we could, feel free to ask those at this time.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? I think it's a great plan. I think it's a good, good way to do some infield here. Anyone have any questions? Don't think so. Thanks, sir. If no one has any further questions or comments?
So anybody in the audience?
Oh, anybody from out there want to speak? I'm ready to move on. Does anyone else want to speak on this application? Guess so, so.
Well, any questions? Do we need to put any, do we need to put anything in here as far as conditions? It wasn't to be a drive-through or, or would that be covered in conditions you have already?
That, that's not covered. I mean, if there was a drive, if, when, when time came to develop it and they found a user that wanted a drive-through, as it is now, that would be a minor development plan. So it would just be, it would be an amend, amendment to this plan and be staff review, but if you feel like you'd like to see it back, then you'd have to add that condition.
I think you've got one sentence here that sums the whole thing up. Redevelopment of the underutilized parking lot would be preferable to building on a new site at the edge of town, especially if it would help revitalize this commercial area. And I think that's the whole thing, revitalize it just...
Sounds like you're making a motion for approval.
Uh, I am.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Smith, you're making a motion for approval with the conditions listed and the variance?
With the, how many conditions we have here? Six. Six conditions.
And the variance?
Yes, yes, sir.
So that's a motion for approval with the conditions and the variance.
And I second.
And Mr. Solsky gave us a second on that. All those in favor? Say aye. Those opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, guys. Somebody needs to sign up here. Anything else, Joe?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing. When Bruce came up to sign the conditions of approval on Bevins, he asked if he could hold off on that until he talked to Jimmy Bevins. My suggestion would be, even though you've taken action on it, if we could pass this to next month, not the action, the action's been taken. That gives him a chance to take, oh, I'm sorry, here, there you go. That gives him a chance to take back the conditions of approval, talk with Jimmy, make whatever additional filings he wishes to make or none at all. But that way, anybody here, and there wasn't anybody, but anybody here tonight for that matter would know then to come back next month.
Say, pass the...
Not, not your action, your action's been taken. Just pass the matter, you know, the, the general application, if you will, to next month to give him a chance to talk to Mr. Bevins and make whatever proposed adjustments they would like to suggest and come back next month. That doesn't negate your action. And if he doesn't come back next month, then your action, of course, isn't effective at all.
Me neither.
I think it's fine.
No, I just need the chairman just to note that on the record, please.
Yeah, I think it's fine, Mr. Smith.
Okay, so I won't have to do notices again, Joe? That's what I want to be sure about.
Now, that's, of course, unless he talks about it.
Yeah.
In which case, all bets...
Yeah. Come back in here and change instead, or it's going to be worse. Joe, do we need to talk about the goals and objectives, maybe?
No.
The goals and objectives, do you need to say anything about those?
This is what we've already approved.
If, if there's no other business, maybe, that's it.
Many adjourned.